Good evening and welcome to the April 10, 2018 Budget Workshop of the Gilderland Board of Education. Would you all please silence your cellphones and rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda this evening is public comment, although I don't believe we have anybody signed up, so we will move to the second item, which is our budget workshop. Marie?
Okay, you received actually two versions of a worksheet that summarize known changes to some of our expenditures and revenues largely based on the completion of the state budget, but also some additional bits of information that came to light since we were together last. So, the second sheet includes that information plus the list of potential restorations or additions that we could not contemplate when we did the first draft of the budget because we didn't have sufficient revenue. So, your second sheet is our initial recommendations about how we might use the additional revenue that we have. And it's a starting point for the conversation. Obviously, in the end, this is, you know, work to be done by the Board of Education, but we thought we'd get the ball rolling for you. So, our process tonight, we thought that Neil and I would sort of tag-team a walk through the data and then turn it over to the Board for discussion. So, with that, Neil, I'll ask you to start.
All right, I'll just walk through the sheet, and the sheet's displayed up on the screen as well. But just to remind everybody where we are in terms of the budget process, the superintendent's budget has already been presented. That was $100,720,850. That's a $2.2 million increase, or 2.27 percent. We had appropriated within that budget $930,000 of fund balance. The tax levy was $72,305.70. That was an increase of about $1.6 million, or 2.23 percent. We estimated the tax increase for Gilderland Residence to be 1.73 percent. We had incorporated reserves as well of $170,000. And at that point, we are a little bit below the tax levy limit. We did have one change in that. With the state aid, we got increased building aid to $8,512. In terms of the tax levy limit calculation, it's part of our capital exemptions, which get added back in for next year's tax levy limit. So, when you have aid that offsets expense, if your aid goes up, it lowers that amount overall. So, it did reduce the tax levy limit calculation, and that's why it's colored at the top by In terms of the adjustments that we know about so far, state aid, we did receive $282,664,000 of additional foundation aid. This is above and beyond what was included in the superintendent's budget. You recall, we hit about $57,000. So, this is another $282,000 on top of that. And then, overall, across several expense-driven aids, we received $9,614 in additional aid there, most of that being building aid. In terms of expenditure adjustments, below the blue line, part of this process is after we develop the superintendent's budgets, there's always an opportunity to look back at expenditures and apply some new information and make adjustments. So, we've done that in the area of employee benefits, where we have made some minor changes to the teachers' retirement system contribution, social security and life insurance. The total of all three of that is a reduction in expenditures of $3,320. For BOSI Special Education Placement, and this is for students with disabilities, again, we've had some transition with students. We're finalizing programs. There was an additional savings of $23,320 as a result of that. We did get back rate information. We had a bid out for natural gas and electricity through the consortium that we participate in. They do a bid every three years. The pricing came back last week, and as a result of Cliff Noonie's analysis, we're able to reduce natural gas and electricity expenses by $41,000. So, there were savings in the rate, and this is the supply rate, not the national grid delivery rate, but the actual supply rate, so that came down and helped us out there. And then, finally, we are able to reduce an expenditure related to summer special education expenses. And if you recall, in the Governor's proposal, he was limiting, or reducing the aid ratio, which school districts would be reimbursed for, for summer special education services. So, the rate, aid ratio was 80 percent. It would have been reduced, in our case, to 47 percent. That would have cost us to absorb another $175,000 in expense. But as a result of the passage of the state budget, that wasn't adopted, that was rejected in the final proposal. So, now we can take away that $175,000 in additional expense. So, there's some savings there as well. And at this point, I'll let Marie talk about the recommendations.
Okay. So, in the last day and a half, we've been reviewing all of the information that we've actually gathered and studied since this process began way back in late October and November, trying to cull through the decisions we've made in order to bring some recommendations to you about how we might respond to this additional revenue. So, under the expenditure adjustments, I'll talk about recommended, some recommended additional expenditure adjustments, and then I'll go back up to the top for a little bit. But we had talked at the last Board meeting about doing a reallocation of the resources that we have invested right now in our coordinator for elementary programs, that's an administrative position, and transitioning those resources into a reading position, because as you can see, we had quite a bit of unmet reading needs across the three elementary buildings, actually, and just the three elementary buildings. So, we have recommended doing that. That would be a savings of $60,000 for the administrative portion, and we have 1.3 FTE needs in reading, and that would be a $104,000 expense. So, we're recommending doing those two things in a paired kind of way. The next one, I know, will make the many community members who have come forward to talk about their concerns with class size very happy. We would like to propose adding two additional FTEs to the elementary pool to address some of those classes across the district where we are at or above the limit, the upper guideline for class size. At this point, I would prefer not to identify which classes, because we're quite early in the game, and we still have students coming and going. The projections that Neil shared with us back at the beginning of the process have already changed in some of the buildings, and so we have some classrooms that are higher and some that are lower. I will add that in addition to the 2.0 FTEs we're recommending to build into the budget, we are still holding on to five unassigned FTEs that we could use to address needs as they emerge and become clearer over the next several months. So, that's $160,000. The next item is to replace instructional technology devices and peripherals. This item was not included in the superintendent's budget at all. It was originally close to $180,000 expense. Since that time, we asked Damian to go back and look at the list of items that he and his team have assessed that are needed, and we asked him to divide it into kind of priority one and priority two. So, this $105,890 reflects items that are a priority one across the district in terms of instructional technology and devices that really do need to be replaced so that we can continue functioning. So, that recommendation is in there. We also have included a 1.0 FTE for course electives at the high school. In this recommendation, I do have some suggestions of what those electives should be that are prioritized, and I'll list them here in a second. The recommendations I'll make now do not take up the entire 1.0 FTE. I purposely left a little flexibility in there, so the high school can assess class sizes, student elective choices, all of those moving parts that happened between mid-April and the end of the school year. So, these would be the top priorities that I would hope to be able to offer. I would like to restore the 0.2 FTE to support AP English. We talked about very high class sizes there. I'd like to recommend 0.2 for AP Computer Science. We spoke about the importance of having opportunities for students to participate in that. I would like to recommend 0.2 for the U.S. History Course. Class sizes there were actually quite high, maxing at 30, and this would reduce it to manageable levels. And my last recommendation within this 1.0 is a 0.1 to support our School-to-Work program. And this is the program that allows students to have both classroom and work-based experiences and gain credit for it. That leaves 0.3 that I would leave to the discretion of the high school. I know there's some other electives that are of interest. I know there's some new opportunities that have been talked about, like American Sign Language. But if we have a little flexibility, we can decide down the road. So, that's the 1.0. And then, the next two lines are the restoration of reductions we made for instructional equipment materials, repairs and supplies in general at the high school. And then, there's also a restoration of $12,900 for music instruments. We had reduced Lori Hirschenhardt's original request by about half, and this would restore it. So, those are the additional recommendations for expenditures. There are a handful of things below the line that were asked for, requests that did not quite make it at this point. They include another 0.4 of course electives at the high school, Damian's priority-two technology supports, and then the pole vault landing system that Regan had requested. So, those additional requests are not in there yet. The last thing I want to talk about is actually above the light blue line, and what we'd like to recommend is that we decrease the use of fund balance as a revenue source. You'll recall, in the superintendent's budget, we added an additional $325,000 as a revenue source because our aid was so constricted and we were so short in revenue. That put us close to $1 million of fund balance as a revenue for this budget. So, we'd like to pull that back a little bit. However, if you look to the bottom again, you can see that we would still use an additional $225,000 of additional fund balance to support this spending plan. So, we're trying to split the difference a little bit coming to these recommendations. So, with that, we're happy to take questions or hear what's on your mind.
I've just been going over some prior budgets also, and I just, seven unassigned teachers is really unprecedented. The last time this happened was two years ago, and in that case, for some reason, the two teachers that were proposed in the budget were for specific classes. And what we did at that point was we said, well, you know, if you're adding two teachers in, maybe we don't need five unassigned. So, we reduced that by one. So, I was just, I mean, I know there's some classes that are close to the upper guidelines, but six, having all six exceed the guidelines seems unlikely. I mean, just statistically unlikely that you'd have six classes all exceed the guidelines.
We have two right now that have exceeded the guidelines, since even we met last or when the original budget was proposed. So, I think we should assign those, per se, not necessarily tonight assign them, but I think they should be assigned. There are other classrooms where we're right on the edge, and we have one that was on our original list of being at the top, and they've lost three students since then, and they're below. So, it gives maximal, maximum flexibility.
Right, but I think then if you removed one of the unassigned, you'd still have six, which is, I mean, you'd have those two plus four additional, and you're saying that that's not enough? I mean, that's, that's almost, I mean, like I said, that's kind of unprecedented, and I mean, we've never done that many in prior budgets. Is there some, something about this year? I mean, it, I know that there's, there's always classes that are close, but, you know, we have our guidelines, and I know, I know no one really wants their child in a class that's in the upper part of the guidelines, but that's the way it happens. I mean, some, some, some classes are smaller, some are larger, I mean, but that's why we have guidelines, I guess, I mean, so.
Well, this is a starting point in the conversation, and, you know, I'm happy to have others weigh in. I would not call the two that we're proposing above the line unassigned, though. I mean, we will assign them.
Just a matter of where?
A matter of where. And it could be as soon as when we adopt the budget next week that we know exactly where we want to put them. But for now, I know I have at least two classrooms where they are over the limit, so.
Right, I mean, like, like two years ago, you said, you said specific classrooms, and that was, I mean, this seems very similar to that situation.
I think with the amount of community concern, I'm, I'm concerned that, we say our class size recommendations are what they are, which is fine, but nobody wants to be in the class that has the maximum, wants their child to be in a class that has the maximum number of possible recommendations. And because the, the number of people that we've had, mostly elementary, who are concerned about class sizes, I think we need to pay attention to that. And I think the adding two is, is great, is a good idea, and we'll relieve some of that. And then, I think at some point, we need to discuss class size. If we're going to say that for grades three to five, 21 to 25 is our recommended, well, there will be some at 25. You can't make every class have 21. And there will probably be some that are 18 or 19, but that's just the way the population is. It's not something that we can control.
But we do have classrooms that are below the lower limit.
Yeah, no, I know. That's what I'm saying. Some of the, some of them are, and people say, well, that was great, and, and why can't we all? Well, you can't always do that, and it just depends on how the population falls. And certainly, as we have high classes, those are where the students will move in. Grade two at Westmere, or whatever it is, is where families will move into Westmere with, with grade two students. So, I, I think it is an excellent idea to put two more in and still give us the flexibility with the other five, so.
I also like having the flexibility to have the extra FTEs and the idea of not assigning them yet because of the fluctuation in the summer. And so, for the high school, would that mean that Computer Science, if that works out, that would be another section?
Yes.
Okay. That was my question.
Barbara?
I too am fully supportive of adding those two extra people. This is the first year we've had so many classes on the cusp, and in years past, when we've had four or five FTEs, I think every year, as I remember, almost all of them have been used, you know, over the course of time. It would also allow, I think, although we, we aren't putting in that $26,000 for the additional electives, would you be able to use any of those for those electives, or would that have to be predetermined here?
No, we have, we could use unassigned FTEs for electives, especially if, we have some electives right now with only nine students signed up, which would mean we wouldn't run it. But as the schedule gets refined, there will be students who can't get into other classes because of conflicts, and so those numbers will grow. So, if that class of nine grows to 18, we could pull from the unassigned pool in order to staff that.
Another question?
Of course.
Okay. I really would like you to be able to commit the 0.1, I guess it would be a 0.1 for that sign language class.
It's 0.2.
0.2. I just accidentally ran into a dad whose son is taking, or hopes to take, the course, and he pointed out to me, which I think we all realize, that sign language is such a gift, that whether you're going into the medical profession, social work, whatever, in today's day and age, what a gift that would be to the high school community to be able to communicate as those kids get, you know, a little bit better at it with the kids at the high school that often don't have anybody to talk to. And I just think, of all the things that we can add in and guarantee, I would love to see that.
I was sort of hoping for a little bit more clarification on exactly what the instructional technology devices and peripherals entailed, and then additionally, the GHS instructional equipment materials repairs, what that entails, but especially the technology, because that's one of the higher numbers on here.
So, you want the priority list, is basically what you're saying?
Yes.
Priority list includes replacement of additional, an additional 20 elementary IMAC desktops across the five elementary buildings, replacement of 100 of our oldest generation Chromebooks, which are starting to exhibit some wear, 10 document cameras across the district, five projectors, classroom projectors, replacement of two 3D printers and an addition of a third 3D printer, replacement of the West Lab projection and audio at the high school, and then restoration of the computer supply line and the computer software line.
How much are the 3D computers used all the time, or?
Printers?
Printers?
They're specialized. I mean, they're, they're by no means a day-to-day usage printer, but they're for specialized use, so they're used quite extensively in the tech ed programs at the middle school and the high school. The art department has acquired one as well, so they're utilizing it.
Right, we saw one one time, there was a demonstration on that.
Yep. But they're not, you know, they're not a typical printer by any means.
No, no, I, I know that. I didn't know how many students are using them.
It varies number-wise, but it's definitely something that's found its way into our programs, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
So, is there, is there like a replacement plan for these types of things? I mean, is it, is it typically in another place in the budget? I mean, is it, or is it, because I'm just kind of wondering why it's, why it's an adjustment to this budget? Why, I mean, because, because there, there was like, you've been talking a lot about grants and things for technology, and I know that there's a lot of technology in the school, but I just wanted to.
Not grants, Smart Schools.
Okay.
That's, that's not a grant program. But if you go back and if you follow the sequence of the budget proposals that have come forth, the original proposal for hardware replacement, which is based on a hardware aging plan, was $470,450. So, then, you know, obviously, we were confronted with some fiscal strain, I would say, and we were asked to reduce, we were able to reduce down to $274,000. So, what you're seeing is a priority of restoration within that, that gap between the original and the reduced.
So, I mean, like, last year wasn't too bad of a budget year. I mean, did you, did, did a lot of technology get replaced last year?
We replace every year. I mean, there, every year, there is replacement of devices. So, if you take a computer lab, for example, that's going to be on a five-year replacement cycle. It's not going to be an every-year kind of a thing. But we're getting to a point, I mean, we literally just replaced that projector last week, which was 12 years old, and we're starting to encounter some, some difficulties with it. If you go around the classrooms in our, our buildings, the classroom projectors are in pretty good shape. However, we do still have some pockets that need to be replaced. But the device that's projecting that, that sheet up there right now is another device that's 12 years old. So, those Elmos throughout the school district now are getting to a point where they're failing. They're also not being supported from a software perspective. They do have a software application that runs those devices. So, you know, we get as much life out of things as we possibly can, but when we have things like the Elmos, the document cameras, which were replaced during a capital project, you confront this point in time where they all start to fail at around the same time. So.
So, we're doing another capital project? I mean, is, is it, are we going to replace technology during that?
Yes.
So, is this just like a stopgap measure?
Well, I mean, if you look at the document cameras, for example, we're just saying, pick up 10, so we have some on our hands so we can replace as they continue to fail. It's not going to be a large-scale replacement, but we fully expect that we will be replacing some, for sure.
My question, also kind of what Kathy said, so, does the Smart School bond act, does that counteract any of the, I guess, you know, the resources we need for, you said Chromebooks at the elementary school? Is that what you said?
Some of the Chromebooks, so, yes, to an extent. And I, Marie was asking me this question a couple of weeks ago about where the Smart Schools money falls into play and where our annual budgeting around hardware replacement comes into play. The way I look at it is when you get a one-time funding stream like a Smart Schools, that's a chance for you to accelerate forward. It's not going to be the vehicle by which you maintain and sustain your programs with technology. It's our operating budget that's going to have to be able to support that and replace that. So, you know, for a long time, we've maintained basically the same replacement budget, and I think I tracked it back to about 2006, and we have not increased that replacement budget really any, with any substantial amount over that period of time, which to me is kind of shocking, but it's also kind of telling when you get to a point where you start seeing things failing on a more regular basis. We have to be ready to, to maintain those devices and to maintain our, our infrastructure and our hardware and our software, all those things.
So, the things that are bought with the, the Smart School bond act, that will go into the cycle too of the plan of recycling?
It will. And we've been pretty careful about how we approach that. So, for example, with the Chromebooks that will come as part of the one-to-one, the replacement of computer labs, we will have to give thought to that. And we've actually reduced one at the middle school, I don't know where Mike is, last year in preparation for that. So, we will see less need for that static kind of computer lab setting, because students will have the devices in the classroom setting. We actually had a conversation this morning about the high school, although we don't have a firm plan right now to reduce labs at the high school. Inevitably, when the devices come into play, we'll monitor the uses, usage of those computer labs, and, you know, if I had a crystal ball, I would say you'd see less usage, which means less replacement. So, you kind of offset some of those expenditures with replacement.
Thanks.
Alan?
If, if we have a favorable budget variance of 2017, 18, and it's actual, would we be able to take some of that surplus that we have from that particular budget and be able to use it to accelerate some of these things?
If it's not equipment-related, because we can't appropriate more than what voters have approved, you could make budget transfers and do things within the current year budget, yes.
I guess I don't understand, what do you mean by, if it's not equipment-related? Most of the stuff you're buying is equipment-related, so are, are we saying that we have to appropriate and approve all equipment purchases like this, even if we have a surplus we can't take and do some budget reallocations to put it into equipment, as long as we stay within the confines of what the total budget is?
That's correct. That's the one category that's split out by the state, so once the voters approve an amount within the budget for equipment, you can't exceed the amount that the voters have approved.
Okay, so, last year, when we put things away in fund balance, and we knew that we were behind on our technical replacement, why didn't we appropriate things for, for that particular event? Because we know we had surplus funds last year, and we could have taken and put those away, and then when, when we were confronted with it this year, with this plan right now, we would be able to maybe put those things and use those as a revenue stream to offset that and maybe do something else.
Well, that's kind of what we've done, because the surplus at the end of the year went into fund balance, and if you notice from this particular sheet now, we're applying $930,000 of fund balance. So, we have added on top of, we added another $320,000 on top of the $300,000 that we added in August when we set the tax rate. So, we've added substantially to our use of fund balance, which came from the surplus from the prior year.
And do we anticipate a surplus this year?
Yes, the fund balance report that you get at every meeting monthly talks about the surplus.
Okay, I don't have that in front of me. Do we recall what that number might be?
I think it's around, 1.2 million, maybe?
Okay, so, if we're going to have 1.2 million surplus this year, which means that 98.4 is really 96-something, why do we need to go up to 101 if we're, if we're? is really 96 something, why do we need to go up to 100 and, 101 if we're, if we're two years running? We're running at a surplus. Why do we have to run at such a high surplus?
Well, I, I think we've talked about this a number of times.
I know we've talked about it, but again, when I look at this, it, it, I'm very perplexed at how we can go from 93.7, excuse me, yeah, 93.7 to 98 to 100. One of them's a five-point, almost a $5 million increase from actual to the budget when we're not going to spend at that level, and we're, we're building our budget on top of that. I don't understand how we can have a five, 4.8 and then a 2.8 increase. I, I, I know you explained it, but.
I know, we've had this conversation several times. I think we went through the budget process with the Business Practices Committee. We walked through a number of the categories to show you how we develop the budget. Of course, there's some variability within the budget, and so we're going to make our best estimate, uh, based on, on the information that we have at hand. Um, at the end of the day, we could end up being favorable or not. In cases where we're favorable, that builds surplus. That surplus gets carried into the following year and can be reapplied as revenue to help lower the tax rate, and that's what we've, we've done in this particular case. So it doesn't go away, it doesn't disappear, it's available to us down the road to help offset budget increases.
So is the 1.2 that, that we're going to potentially have this year, is that, is 930,000 of it being funded by that 1.2? Is that how we would look at it?
It could possibly be that, yes, because we'll have a surplus that will go, and we're taking some of that surplus out in terms of fund balance, and we'll have fund balance going back in. Um, so it'll almost be a wash in that regard.
I just, I was just looking back at, at old budgets, um, because I have them on my shelf, and, you know, I just, I just recall that, um, I think it was two years, starting in, I have it, 2014, but I'm not sure if that's true or not, um, that we were susceptible to fiscal stress.
That's correct.
Because we had, um, not enough in our fund balance, and I'm, I'm not sure if, if my numbers are actual or, um, or if they were just proposed, but I, I'm showing that, um, we were spending up to $2 million in fund balance, at least one of the year and 1.5 another. And then, um, in, in the following year, we, we did better because we got more, um, a lot more state aid. So, so is that, is that, do I remember that correctly?
Yeah, I don't know if the numbers are exactly right, but I, you know, we went through that difficult period, and went out for a number of years with the capital donation aid and all of those things. And, and basically, in order to preserve program and staff, we ended up using more of our fund balance as a revenue source to help offset, uh, some of the increases in expenditures or maintain what we had, basically. And that's what it was used for at that time, just being able to maintain the programs and offerings that we had for students. And fortunately, we had that money available, we were able to use it at that time. We did get dinged, if you will, um, for that. I think we were one of a handful of schools, uh, in the area that actually was on the, the list susceptible to fiscal stress. Um, but fortunately, we had that money available, we were able to use it, we were able to maintain programs during a very difficult prolonged stretch. Um, we're at a point now where we've been able to build that back up again. Looks like going forward, there's potential here with what's going on at the federal level and the state level to be on the verge of maybe another fiscal crisis. Um, it would behoove us to have some resources set aside, and if we have to go through that, we've had the experience once, we needed that money. If we didn't have that money, um, we would have cut programs and increased class sizes and done all the things we would have needed to do to survive and, and provide an education for students. But because of that, we were able to preserve most of what we have and cherish in the school district in terms of an education and be able to use that, so.
I think the one, the 1.5 million is actual, I had it on my, on the budget, that, that's what we used in 2014, 15. So, I mean, we were using a lot more of our fund balance, um, than we are now. So, just glad I would point that out since I wrote it down.
Yeah, we did work our way back down to about 300,000, which was where we've been for a few years, but now we're back up close to a million. Um, doesn't take long to dive back into it and start using it again when you have these types of situations most quickly.
Yep, looks like that, that's the case. Barbara?
Another question, and I apologize if I missed it during the draft presentation, but this replace the pole vault landing system? Um, I saw, I see Reagan isn't here to explain it, but I know my, my daughter used to pole vault, and my granddaughter now pole vaults, and that's sort of a critical thing for pole vaulting. So I don't know what status the, uh, current one is, but if there's any way that, if it is as bad as his requesting a new one, um, if we could consider the potential of putting that in the budget. Um, it, the landing system is very critical to the pole vaulting world.
Uh, Reagan would agree if, if he could have been here tonight. And we have been talking about it, and I asked him the question, is this, you know, a dire thing that must be replaced for next year, or could it go one more year? And I think while he didn't say yes, it's dire, we must do it. I know he would prefer to do it, and his coaches would prefer to do it this year. Um, but, you know, it's at a.
I mean, just from the standpoint of safety, you have one kid miss or thing collapse or whatever, it's not worth it to me not to put it in. And so you would just take that out of the, the fund balance, or you would, yeah, you would have to reverse that, you have to take more out of the fund balance for that 13,000. But again, from the standpoint of safety for kids, and particularly if, if the cultures are in agreement, I would love to see you consider that.
Yeah, I, I think when he described it, it sounded, or whoever it was who talked about it, it did sound like it was a pretty necessary, uh, thing to add, and it, it seems like with the amount that it is, it's not huge, but it would be a worthwhile investment.
We have 15,000 allowable limit, we have a cushion there, right?
Right.
So it could come out of that without it. I know, big cushion.
But still, you're only like a 3,000.
I know Neil's like having a cushion.
The land, the landing would be tough on that one.
But it gives us, we still have that.
I mean, you, you wouldn't have to take the full 13,000 out of the fund balance. As you said, we're, what, 18,000, I think?
15,000, 600.
You want to leave at least a little cushion in there for Neil, you know, but, um, as I said, I, I'd love to see you folks consider that.
Well, I was going to go back to Kathy's point in the beginning about the, um, you know, having the five. Uh, and we have, I really have to, you know, give it over to you in terms of, uh, you know, since we have, I would support the two additional based on the, the elementary numbers, definitely. But if those are taken care of, since we were worrying about them when we put it up to five, would four be appropriate? And then we have the 80,000, 80,000?
Seventy, eighty.
Eighty thousand?
Was it eighty?
Yeah, eighty, to give Neil more of a cushion and get the pole vaulting system if, um, if that were something that you feel. I mean, you have the better picture in terms of where this might play out.
Well, if, if two of the classrooms, if you go back to the original presentation, I, I shared five classrooms were of issue. There's a kindergarten classroom at GES that's at 23. Um, there is a third grade at GES that right now is at 25.6 average. Uh, there is a third grade at Altamont that's 24.5. Westmere has a classroom that's 25.25. Um, and Pine Bush had a fifth grade class at 25, but it's since lost some students and they're down to 23.6, which would not have made this list. Um, but things change.
I know, I know.
So, um, the, the two worries that I have are the two that are already over the limits, and they are at our two buildings that tend to gain more students over the course of time. So if I'm tipping my hand here, you know, so be it, um, that would leave us, uh, five FTEs to deal with maybe as two, maybe three issues, and then others that might come up because that does happen.
I know, and I remember the year when we didn't have it.
I mean, generally with the unassigned, a couple will go as whole FTEs for sections, but the vast majority of our unassigned go point two here, point one here, point two there, to truly, um, address unknown needs that occur once, you know, the summer is underway or school is underway, when new students move in, or, um, you know, just new needs emerge, and it gives us that flexibility. You know, five is generous. I, but Barbara's always offering me more.
Well, because we remember that year, I mean, we remember that year.
So I was expecting her to offer me six.
No.
No, I'm, I'm still for the seven.
I, I.
Oh, seven total.
Yes, and I, I would probably assign the two so that we're not talking about seven unassigned.
Right, five.
And I think you just heard where they're likely to be assigned, given, you know, classrooms that are already over.
Can we, can we do four and a half? Do you have to do even numbers? I mean, full numbers?
Um, we can do whatever.
Okay, because then you'd have some play, because you do have those situations where it's point one or point two.
Right.
Four and a half, and then we'd have $40,000 to take care of.
Absolutely.
I, yeah, that. Or 4.75, and we'd have just enough to do the pole vaulting.
But in light of what, you know, Alan is sharing, I don't have any problems taking a little bit more out of the fund balance. You're talking 13,000 bucks or 10,000 even, um, maintaining. If you have the seven, that point four that we didn't put in for the high school electives would be available, and you wouldn't be shortchanging those kids and giving them those opportunities. So I'd love the seven.
Same with me. More comfortable with the seven.
Okay.
I'm not sure you'll get any arguments.
Not for you.
Well, I mean, it is, if you, if you don't actually need seven, it, it's, you know, it's, it's having, you're putting, you're putting, you know.
Tying up money.
You're tying up $80,000 that could be spent on something else. I mean, that's, that's, I mean, that's what we, we decided two years ago, but I mean, I guess this is a different year, but it was the same issue. I mean, there were, there were a number of classes that were, um, pushing the limit, but like you said, sometimes class sizes decrease. I mean, it, not every class that's, that's near the limit goes over it.
Right.
So, I mean, statistically, like I said, it's not, it's not a given that you're going to have to use them on all those classes, and that's just, that's just my point. You know, if you want to spend money on other things, then you could, you could reduce, I mean, you could have six teachers for, um, these issues rather than seven, so.
I think some of the, you know, like, I don't know who said it, but there's, there's kids that move in to the district too during the years, so it's not just at the beginning of the year. And then, um, if, if we had to spend money on, on anything, I think, you know, class size would have the biggest impact. I'd, I'd rather have the seven and use that money to reduce class size over anything else. I mean, if I had to prioritize what to spend money on, I think class size would be at the top. So I would be with the five extras, so seven total.
So if you had to take money away from something else, you would take it away from the other two schools because class size is, is at the elementary level is the biggest priority?
No, I mean, I'm looking at the list with the, with the recommendations, and I'm in favor of that list. So there's still, um, the one FTE at the G, at the high school electives, which I think is great because I was also looking at AP English and Computer Science. So this list I'm comfortable with, the elementary where we know that they're at the upper limit, and at the high school where there were sections not going to be offered. This, this fulfills both, so not just elementary, but all around.
Right, I just, I was just asking you, just because you said that it was your number one biggest priority was class size at the elementary school.
No, 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 I didn't say elementary, it's class size period.
Oh, I see, like throughout the district?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I, I, I felt like.
I thought, I, I misunderstood you, I thought you said that elementary class size was the biggest priority.
No, no, I, I would say class size in general would be my priority, and I, that's why I said I like this recommendation list because it covers, I think, all of the spots that we heard. Because hearing, what was it, 28 in AP English, and then not being able to offer the second Computer Science, both of those I think would have been, I don't know, short-sighted.
Yeah, no, I agree with that. I mean, I think, I think that's true, particularly in an English class where people are writing papers and things like that. I mean, having that many kids in the class would be very, um, difficult. Barbara?
The only thing I wanted to add to what Seema said is that if we have the, the seven and they're not all used, that, that point four that we didn't give the high school for the electives could be built into that very easily. So, again, I like the seven.
Is there anything not on this list that any would, anybody would be interested in bringing up? I've kind of, just out of curiosity, been wondering about the sign in front of the high school. I thought that was going to be two-sided, and I see that it's one-sided kind of, do we have any plans to do another side?
Um, Tom's ready to come up.
We, um, we had done some fundraising and we had some money to do the initial sign, and then Cliff had some money in his budget. At the end of last year, I, I reached out to Neil and I, I said, you know, could we, if I could move some money around, could we do the other side of the sign? Uh, but the board had only approved the expenditure for the sign that is out there. So we weren't really able to do that based upon, you know, the approval and the budget the way that it stood. I know that if Ms. McManus was here, she'd be hopping up and down at the mention of the sign because it kind of has been her, uh, you know, project, and she would definitely like to see the other side of the sign. And I think, you know, Cliff would like to see it too, and then we could do, you know, some more aesthetically pleasing things around the cement pad and stuff too. That, that would be very little cost, but it'd be better to get the other side of the sign up. I think it would be less cost too because it's basically a repeater. You don't, it just reads off of what the other one is doing, so.
What's the cost?
I, I, I don't want to say right now because they, they change. Um, you know, it's, it's probably equivalent to a pole vault landing area or something along those lines, right around that.
Could you find out for us though? Because that's a very good point.
Excuse me?
Could you find out before next week?
Oh, definitely, yeah.
Would be?
Yeah. We, you know, it's something we put out for bids, um, and we generally get those back pretty quickly.
And you said you did some fundraising for the first half?
Yes.
Has anything been done for the second half?
Um, we still have a little bit of money in, in a balance. Um, we did some fundraising classes, uh, graduating classes. The tradition has been to give some money to the freshmen, the incoming class, they've done that, but there were also a few classes that also donated towards the sign too, a little bit of money, and then the rest of the freshman class. That did not take place last year because at that point, we were still uncertain whether we were going to get both sides or not. But we could certainly work towards that.
Now, that's, I guess this is a question for Neil. You said that you couldn't give any money even from, uh, Cliff's budget for the sign because it wasn't specifically mentioned in the, in the budget proposal? Is that how it works? Or say if something, one of his plows breaks down or something and he has to buy a new plow, uh, do we say, no, you've got to wait until the next budget? Or is there a provision somehow you can get around whatever it is that we're dealing with here?
Uh, it's, equipment is the thing. It's part of the contingent budget law, which also says if you have a failed budget, you can't exceed the appropriation for equipment. That's one of the things they won't allow you to do under a contingent budget. That also carries into a current year budget, so once the voters set that appropriation for equipment, it can't be used. What Cliff actually does is he holds off on some of his equipment purchases toward, until toward the end of the year to make sure he can cover whatever, uh, needs he has. But other than that, we really have the money that's allocated for equipment and budget to use in that particular year. So this would be the time, if you were looking to increase an appropriation for equipment, would be to put it in this year's budget so that it's there for next year.
But now, he hasn't expended all his money, obviously, so does he anticipate that there might be enough left in his budget to finish the sign from this year's budget?
Basically, what, his role in all of the sign was really on the installation side. So we, our staff helped with the electrical, the pad, um, all of those sorts of things. The infrastructure type of piece, it was really the fundraising that took care of the sign that you see, the visible part. Uh, Cliff was able to do that, it's really manpower and construction-type costs, so it wasn't equipment costs. So now we're talking about equipment costs because it's the other side of the sign.
Is there any, any money left in his equipment line that he'd be willing to give up for the school?
It's too early to tell, and he'll tell you that too. We've got a whole spring to go here of, um, you know, he's maintaining athletic fields, and, um, it, it would be very hard to say at the beginning of April that he knows he's got whatever it is, and I don't even know how much he's got left in his budget this year. So I think if, if the issue is you want to address the sign, this is the time to have that conversation in, included in this budget.
in, included in this budget.
I think I'd have to recuse myself on that, seeing how the town feels about signs that are electronic. Of course, they have no control over what, what happens on school property, but.
Thank you.
Is there interest in the sign? I mean, I, I just think it looks like it's a project that needs to be finished.
Yeah.
So.
I guess it really depends on how much.
Yeah, it would, it would depend to me on how much too, but we would be able to have that information prior to next week's meeting, so.
I just asked one quick question, as far as trying to find money for the sign or for pole vault landing system or something like that. A couple meetings back, I asked about that water leg testing, and it was fifty thousand in, in the copy that we had at that time. But then Cliff said it's thirty-five thousand, so is that fifteen thousand still in there, or is that?
No, that's, he was doing a re, an adjustment between his budget line, so that line was going down. It was intended to go to another line, we just have to make that adjustment on the sheet. So his overall budget is intact, he was shifting money from, from one line to another, so it's not additional, unfortunately.
Good try, Tim.
Oh, yeah.
Are there other questions or comments about what's in front of you?
Yeah, I just have another question. If we look at the FTEs again, when we take the seven FTEs that you wanna use for unassigned, what will that do to class size? How, I mean, we're saying it'll reduce class, class sizes, but, you know, what, what does that mean in terms of quantifying it? Like, how much?
Depends on where.
It depends on which classroom, um, I mean, I can do the quick math here.
We just talked about AP English.
Well, AP English is a different category, it would go down to, I'm looking at Alex to twenty-two or twenty-three. So without doing some calculations, I'm not gonna be able to come up quickly, but it'll bring them down by four or five students per class.
And how, how much does that put us underneath our guidelines? Because, not, not to sound hard or anything like that, but if we're not gonna live within the guidelines, why do we have the guidelines?
Well, we'd be in the, within the.
We're already within the guidelines, that's the point I'm trying to make.
Yeah, but I think four or five less students in a class is a lot.
If we're bringing them down, we'd still be in.
I mean, the only time you use them is when you're over the top.
Think about when you have a table of like four or five students, so you, you lose that whole tape. I mean, that's, that's a good number, it's a quarter, fifth of the class.
I'm not arguing that, what I'm at, really arguing is if, if the guidance and the guidelines that we have aren't the right guidelines, because we have to, we're constantly fighting this thing about class sizes, why don't we adjust the guidelines? So we're within the guidelines that we are comfortable with, not.
I think that's, I think that point is fine, I don't know if that's, has to be done right now with, because, I mean, that.
We wrestle with this every year.
Yeah, but that would be an involvement of the, the union, that would be involved.
That's why the guidelines.
Yeah, right, I think whatever guidelines you set, you're still gonna have people, if you're at the top, whatever the guideline is, whether it's twenty-five or twenty-three, are gonna say, I don't want them at the top. So I think we have, the guidelines we have fall within reasonable range, nobody wants to be at the top. So we have the opportunity to bring them to the bottom, okay, but I agree with you, that you, we have a range.
But didn't we have a discussion about the English, um, classes and, and what they were having to do? That it was going to twenty-nine, and so they had to change?
Yeah, so.
So with the restoration of that one section for AP English, it's going to bring the class size from twenty-nine down to twenty-two.
Okay, but what did we do with the, wasn't there some discussion about the twenty-nine? So we had to make other, I don't know if it was in English or where it was, that we were making other adjustments?
So the decision that one has to do in order to, if one needs to save an FTE is you look at where can you reduce a point one, point two and minimize the impact? So the conundrum is, do I increase class size and kids still have the ability to access that course? Or do I look at the most, the lowest enrolled elective and close that opportunity? And then force kids to be redistributed in other areas? So in this case, I opted to increase the class size to maintain the options and choices for as many kids as possible.
Twenty-nine in a AP English is.
It's challenging.
Very, very challenging.
That's for sure.
So thank you for restoring.
So to answer Alan's question, I just did the math on two of them. So the one classroom, um, fourth grade at Westmere currently has a hundred and one students. Uh, in the, um, four sections, it would be twenty-five point two-five children per section. It would go down to twenty point two children per section. So some would be at twenty, and some would be at twenty-one. Um, our lower limit is twenty-one, so that's how that would work.
What is the upper limit?
Twenty-five. Um, in the third grade, and this is, third through fifth grade is twenty-one to twenty-five. So in that third grade classroom, um, class sizes would go from twenty-five point six to nineteen point two-five. So there would be some classrooms with nineteen and some with twenty, the lower guideline is twenty-one.
Don't we have, um, push-ins even at that, at that level?
Are they counting the push-ins?
This doesn't count the push-ins, so the, the push-ins vary from building to building.
Right.
So at Westmere, we have youngsters in the deaf and hard of hearing program who push in. That's less of an issue at GES. I don't know, we may have a handful of kids who push in, but it's, um, it's where we host both these classrooms, where that pushing in can affect, uh, class size more at some portions of the day. Because they're not pushed in all day long, they come for, um, specials, um, they come for certain courses. So we do take all that into consideration.
Thank you.
I, I just, I was just gonna comment, I just recall that we had, I don't have it with me, but we had a sheet that's, that showed, um, average class size in the, um, in the area. And we are among the lowest.
Best.
Like, like, if not the lowest class size in the area, the class sizes that we have right now. And that's not to say every single class is the same size, but the average is the lowest in the area, so, um. And, you know, it's interesting, because like, some of these things that are talked about at other times, but never talked about at the budget, is I think some people were concerned that our, that our ranking, like, in some of these, um, publications has, is not as high as it was. So I don't know, I mean, it seems to me there's not like a super big correlation between having the lowest elementary class size and having the highest ranking. And I, you know, it, it's hard to correlate, you know, one thing with, you know, success in school. So, and I, I just kind of just bring that up, just because it's sort of like something we never talk about during the budget, but we talk about it at other times.
Well, there's a body of research that puts the sacrilege, class size fairly low on the list of interventions for improving student achievement. And it's just.
But we have a community that.
Wants low class sizes.
Yeah, well, it's kind of an, like, it's like, like a, something that's easy to, to see. And maybe some of those other things that are possibly more important are a little more subtle and harder to, um, ask to change.
Where was that? I remember reading.
It's John Hattie's research.
Didn't you send it, did you send, did I just ask for it, or do we all get it?
Oh, I sent it like five times.
I remember, you should, you should pull that list, that was interesting, those chart, reading from that stuff.
I've been carrying it around with me, but I didn't bring it tonight, but I will include it.
It would be good for us to.
The number one, um, intervention for improving student learning and achievement, and I noticed I said learning and achievement, not test scores, is collective teacher efficacy, which is what Mrs. Rizzo has done at Linwood, where teachers work collaboratively to solve the problems of practice. So if you have that and low class size, you're gonna go off the charts. Um, but I was at a conference when I was in Nashville, and somebody in the audience raised the issue about class size. And, and, you know, it causes a lot of controversy to say these words, because there is a belief that lowering class size will automatically improve student learning and achievement. And this example that the presenter gave doesn't apply to elementary school, but to high school. And he, he said this, he said, if you have a class of thirty students and your teaching approach is to lecture them for forty-five minutes, and then you have a class of twenty-two students and your choice is to lecture them for twenty-five minutes or forty-five minutes, you will have zero instructional impact, because you haven't changed your practice. Now, if having a class of twenty-two allows you to structure how you use your time in different ways, so you are actually engaging students more, you're gonna have an impact. It's very hard to have a class of thirty students and try to find ways to interact with them in ways that you can be sure they were all appropriately engaged the whole time.
That is so true.
So that's where class size makes a difference. It's a nuanced argument though, but class size alone will not make a difference. In, in student learning.
Given what our community expects from, from teachers too, they value the fact that teachers know their kids, because they don't have like thirty in a class, they get the time to get to interact and know them. And I think that's valuable to this community, and I'm sure to us.
Me, it might not impact independently, but I think it impacts other factors that I guess together can have an impact in the classroom. I'm sure, I, I would guess any teacher would argue for the impact that they can have in the classroom with, you know, four less students.
And can you, can you practice the, the kinds of, uh, teaching practices that we want as the classes grow larger? Or you end up falling back on old methods that really aren't as effective? So you've kind of got to weigh that, as you move ahead and you're developing practices that are better, they depend on a lower class size perhaps, because that's what we have, but if we up them, we may not be able to use those practices to their.
But you can't have one without the other.
Exactly, so it's got, it's a, a fine val, find that balance.
Well, I don't think anyone was arguing for, um, changing the guidelines to have larger classes.
No, 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 no.
Tim?
I can't not comment on class size. Um, class size is very important. Um, there, there is also a body of research, I think there's a pretty big study from Tennessee that shows that, uh, class size is one of the, the biggest factors, um, for, for student learning and for classroom effectiveness. So, um, I, I would always put class size at the top of the list, even more so today though, because when, when the guidelines that we look at with twenty-two to twenty-five students, uh, were set, that was before there was the move to inclusion practices, which has changed the, changed the parameters of the classroom. I, I think considerably is, is a fair statement.
It depends on where you look at it, but with that, I think we have to.
I think at elementary level, uh, it, it has a big impact, so that the classroom has changed. It's very different, the way you deliver instruction, the way you approach your day, uh, just the whole makeup of the classroom. And then when you put push-ins on top of that, uh, you know, class size does emerge as, as a huge factor. So I would just say that when, whenever we're looking at that issue, or we're looking at guidelines, which I know we're not looking at today, but we're talking about it, um, that, that that has to be recognized. You know, the way, yeah, I was stunned the way the classroom changed in the last five years of, of my thirty years. And I'm sure you have this, it's, I know it's all relative, that Gloria would say the same. But, uh, it, it's really, like, I even think now, to, to be a substitute teacher, to go into an elementary school classroom would be terrifying for, for a lot of people. Because the classroom is so different, um, there can be so many more people in the classroom. There can be, uh, so many more, um, challenges with students. Uh, so all of that factors in, and, and it could, you know, it continues to put a, put a big focus on the idea of how class size is so important. I think it's hugely important, the elementary level, but I think it's equally big in middle school and, and high school levels. Uh, the, the English class, that was a great example. If you're going, going to go from twenty-nine to twenty-two, that, that's great. Uh, anytime we can do that, we, we need to strive to do that, that's, that's very important. So that's just my more than two cents on class size.
Thank you. I just, I just wanted to comment on the, the Tennessee study, because I, I did look at that as well. And I think that study, it's, it's hard to, um, to use that study for, um, for just a, a difference of a few students, because I think what, what they did in that study, they, they changed the class by like, like eight fewer students. Like, they had like really small classes and then regular classes, and the kids did better in the really small classes that were like, like, you know, eight or nine students smaller. So I don't know if that's really, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't know if it's really relevant to, um, just the relatively small differences in class size that we have. And also, I just, I kind of, it, it kind of bothers me when people talk about inclusion as being like, I guess you'd say a negative, that you have to have smaller classes because of inclusion? Because, um, I think it's pretty clear that kids who are included in classrooms, they're getting their services pushed into the class, so there's like, there's more adults in the classroom, because they're coming in there to give services to the students. So I think that's something that's, that people don't really ever seem to talk about. They just talk about, well, there's students in there that have some challenges because they have disabilities. But I think, I think looking at that as always kind of a negative thing is, is not, is not correct. I mean, I, I think, I don't, I, I just kind of object to that.
Can I, can I also chime in on that? Excuse me, um, at the high school in particular, we've not only added adult services, we've actually reduced class sizes because of inclusion with the CO-TAW sections. So that's a mis, misrepresentation of what inclusion is. Inclusion doesn't necessarily mean larger class sizes by any means. The other piece, I would say, Tim, not to disagree with you, but the elementary has actually had the least impact from inclusion. There's really been no difference at the elementary level, other than one exception, where we, uh, took the self-contained class at Linwood and students returned to their home catchment. Other than that, the placements of students at the elementary is exactly the same as it was prior to any discussion of inclusion.
Tim?
I mean, the kids are our kids, and they're gonna be in the classes. And it's, we didn't add kids or bring in kids to add to the class.
Have we gotten better at identifying, have we gotten better at identifying needs and programming for kids different, better?
I believe so.
Yeah, and I think that's what happens.
Right, right.
You, you're, the expectation of the classroom teacher is raised, because we are getting better at, you know, diagnosing issues and providing services, and all that comes into, to, to play. It's, it's a multifaceted thing, it's not just one factor, it's so many things that go into the dynamics of a classroom. And each one has to be looked at, yes, it is, it's a problem solver thing.
And I think that, that's where.
That's why I like the idea of Linwood, you know, doing that whole, you know, let's look at the, the classroom, what's happening there, and let's figure out a solution for that. It's not the same for every classroom.
And that, that's where we've also coupled the work with some of the changes in what we do with problem solving and decision-making, and collective and collaborative decision-making. And that's, you know, it's, I'm not going to in any way say everything is perfect and grand. I mean, there's, there are always challenges, but when we say inclusion, I don't think, and I agree with Kathy wholeheartedly, I don't think we should ever look at that as a bad thing necessarily. Um, you know, we had a great presentation on the superintendent's conference day for all of our K through twelve instructional staff. And the presenter, Dr. Richard Villa, shared with our staff the research behind it. And students are far more successful when they are included in a general education setting, not just the students with disabilities either. And that's a critical point, the benefits are for all of the students in the room, especially when you have an arrangement like we have at the high school, where you're bringing in additional instructional staff, who are now a support for all of the students in the room. So, but it is multifaceted, I mean, there's not a, you know, it's, it's, and I often say, it's not a model. There's not a model around inclusion. There's thoughtful decision-making around inclusion for sure, but there is no one size or one, you know, way to approach it by any means.
Okay, so just, just to sort of refocus the discussion, because I, I don't think anybody said anything negative about inclusion.
No, they didn't, just the challenges, right.
Tim, did you have anything else to?
Yeah, I'm.
That you wanna comment on, and then we'll move back to the.
I guess I'm, I'm, I'm trying to process how anything that was just said was, was negative. Uh, nothing I said.
I wasn't implying that it was negative, I just wanted to clarify something.
It just did. It just went along with comments that were made, I mean.
I apologize, I implied that, wasn't my intention.
And there was, there was nothing negative, um, I'm just trying to talk about the reality, reality of the classroom. The classrooms have changed in Gilderlin, um, they just have, uh, because of inclusion. because of inclusion, because of state mandates, because of a whole host of things. There is nothing that is negative to point that out. It's just something to be able to discuss. The whole idea of the Tennessee study. Look, I rarely bring up studies, but it is a relevant study. I would definitely go with thirty years classroom experience over any study, any day of the week. And I think we could bring in plenty of teachers in this district who would talk about their classroom experiences. And I would put way more faith in that than than any studies. So, you know, I'm not really sure what what that was all about right there. But.
Well, it's just been talked about a lot. I mean, I think I think it keeps getting brought up.
Characterize it as negative was was not correct. It wasn't even close to being correct. So, you know, we're we're having a very good discussion. You wonder why I don't say anything most of the time because it gets mischaracterized and it's it's not right. So let's be careful. And let's have a discussion. I think all information should be out on the table. Everything can be shared and we can take it from there. But, you know, to use this word negative is not not right. It's bogus.
Well, you know, I think the constant reference to inclusion, maybe not from you specifically, but I think it's been it's been talked about a lot. And I think it has been talked about in what I would characterize as a way that that it has a negative impact on a class in some way. And I think when I say negative, I think it's like, well, people use euphemisms like, well, it's more challenging, it's changed, you know. And and I think sometimes people think change is not good, you know, like people don't like change a lot. So, I mean, I don't know. I mean, maybe you like change, maybe, I mean, because you said your teaching practice had to change. And I and I wasn't sure how you felt about that.
Have you ever been in a classroom to to do this kind of an approach?
What's your point? I mean, no, I'm not I'm not a classroom teacher.
Experience is my point. Experience is my point.
So I should so I should defer to anything that you say because you were a classroom teacher. So, I mean, it's like, I mean, okay, I'm not a classroom teacher. So I can't say anything?
So I'm just going to jump in here because this is.
Not about your experience, but when I had a Down syndrome student in third grade, you definitely have a have a different year and you have different demands on your classroom and on your time and on your students and the way you teach.
So, Tim, I'm just gonna I'm just gonna jump in here.
That I would never trade, but.
And just kind of refocus this back on to the budget discussion. But of course, we can continue to discuss inclusion down the road. Might be nice for all of us to kind of get refocused on that as well. So in terms of budget.
Again, just I don't want to.
Alan.
Blunder this, but based on all I heard about the class sizes and how they've changed, to me, it makes sense at some point in time for us to revisit, to look at our guidelines because we've made all these changes to how we're delivering instruction. And the guidelines are more than five years old. They may be outdated for what we're doing here, and they might not be a good reference for us to determine what the appropriate people, especially if we have more than the teacher in the classroom is an adult. If we're pushing people in, like Damon and Tim and Kathy have said, and that makes a different environment for the classroom. And also, to me, it makes it much stronger if there's more adults in there because that means that there's more people that can give one-on-one intention attention to people that need that type of attention or need help. And again, it might behooves to look at the guidelines.
I'd already said that, too.
Okay. Yep. I think that's a good idea to take another look at those, especially now considering the changes that we're all interested in making, that it might be time to look at those again. So are there any other items that people are interested in discussing related to the budget, whether they're on this sheet or not?
I think it might be interesting. Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Just to see if you change the guidelines, what the financial impact is. Because, I mean, seven teachers are a half million dollars. So, I mean, I don't know how many teachers you'd need if you changed the class guidelines.
We're not doing that.
That's not happening now anyway.
Changing class guidelines would take, you know, obviously, you need to have all the
right people involved in that conversation. So doing that right now in a rush, I think it's a waste of time to even talk about it until after this budget is passed.
I agree. I'm just suggesting that they might need to look at.
No, and I'm just saying people brought it up. I think I don't remember who at the public comment also about having this discussion. So I agree, you know, if people want to talk about it, let's talk about it. Let's just table it for tonight.
Agreed. I have some questions about technology.
Okay.
Because I've heard you say, I can't remember if it was last year, this year, this part of the budget. But we have a lot of aging technology. And I remember, I think it was four years ago, we went to Bosse's and I don't know if we bought the stuff or released. I can't remember the financial.
It's an IPA. It's a.
It's a what?
It's an installment purchasing agreement.
Do we still have that option available to do that kind of stuff?
We do. And that's how we've replaced teacher devices.
Okay.
So we've utilized an IPA purchasing primarily for replacing staff devices.
And how does that fit in the this bud- the budgeting process? Not this budget, but any budget?
We're in our final year of the last three-year IPA agreement.
So we would do another one next year, probably.
Next year, we will propose another one.
Can you have multiple ones? Like, if you did an IPA this year and then or next year and then the year after did another one? So do you have a more rigid and defined replenishment plan? Because again, technology changes, as you know, at a really rapid rate. So to to hold on to technology for ten years, I mean, just think about the cell phone you got three years ago.
The devices that I referenced that are ten years old wouldn't generally fall under an IPA. And they would typically come with something like a capital project.
Okay.
We do have a very rigid replacement plan. I'm happy to show it with you at some point if you'd like to see it. I mean, we basically track every single year and track back multiple years to see what is coming up for replacement. And that's how we developed the hardware replacement budget proposal.
Okay. So like, what would be the stuff that would be part of that IPA? Is like the Chromebooks part of that?
No, no, that it's the staff devices. So each of our teachers in the district is given a mobile device. And that's that's the primary funding stream for that replacement.
Okay, my memory's run fade. I mean, is that what those carts were talked about when we did that?
Those are student devices.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I know. It's a lot. It's a lot to keep track of.
Anyone else?
I do not have a question, but I'd just like to say I like the way this was done, the way the recommended without the recommendation, with the recommendations. I had no problem with this.
This was easy.
The explanation went with it. So great. Thank you, Neil.
Okay. So, Marie, are you comfortable moving forward for next week?
Well, I guess I want to know what that means. So I know we want to get prices on the other side of the sign. And we want to talk a little bit with Regan about the pole vault landing system. So what would you like us to bring back on a week from tonight? Because typically what we would do is come back with a proposal with a dollar amount. And someone would make a motion in a second and then we'll fine tune a little bit. Are there other changes that you would like us to make or other things to build into what we've already done here?
I think what I've seen in the past, if you come back with the same thing that you have here and then you, you know, then have to start making the amendments, I would start with those things in. And then if we want to take them out, do the reverse.
So include the pit and the sign?
And the sign.
I thought you also had the sign language thing. Is that part of is that on here?
That can be.
It was part of the.
Sign language should be done. If the high school can decide, they have four tents to.
Oh, okay.
They can do that with one of them.
I didn't realize it was a fluid or variable. Okay.
Well, that's how Marie.
Okay.
She doesn't have that. She doesn't have that in yet.
No, under the one. For selectives, there's one hole and she.
The remaining points.
Kind of set seven of them. So there's point three that the high school can choose.
Right. As well as five unassigned. So.
Five unassigned.
Okay, so you covered it with the.
Point four.
I got you now.
They've got. They heard Barbara, obviously.
Anything else? Okay.
We don't need a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I think we don't need a motion.
Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn? Gloria, Second Judy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do. I was going to give.